Okay, I called our meeting to order July the 19th, Board of Commissioners. Invocation today is Commissioner Chris Gurley.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us together this morning. We ask that you give us the knowledge and wisdom to carry out the business of our county. Dear Lord, we thank you for our interns that decided to work with our county departments this year, and we ask that you protect them during this time and bless their career decisions in the coming years. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance, Commissioner Antonio Williams.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm sure you all have read the minutes of June 21st. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve our minutes of June 21st. Any discussion on that? Not all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Any adjustments on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Couple of adjustments. Number eight, under the consent agenda, we're going to remove the Wayne County Personnel Policy, Article 11, Section 8, or the resolution amending that policy as requested by our Human Resources Department. We're also going to, under New Business, remove item number one, renumber number two to number one, and then add a number two, which is a resolution supporting the quarter cent sales tax on the November 8th, 2022 general election ballot in Wayne County. And we'd also like to clarify, under the consent agenda, item number four, that is under the motion to appoint a voting delegate, that that delegate will be Joe Daughery. And that's all the adjustments, sir.
Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
All right, we got a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We do have a Board of Adjustment meeting at 9:30. We're going to go forth with the rest of our meeting here, under our consent agenda. We have discussed all those items at our agenda meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, we got a motion to approve our consent agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Not all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. Okay. And we're moving to New Business.
Yes, sir. Item number one is a presentation on the quarter cent sales tax proposal, and Joe Gilli is here to present on that.
Good morning.
Chairman, board, how are y'all doing this morning?
Great.
We are here talking about the one quarter cent sales tax. You guys are going to have a resolution coming up in just a minute, but we wanted to provide a little bit of background. We've been through this before, but wanted to kind of talk a little bit about it for anybody who may be watching that has questions about it, because we know there's a lot of questions. It's kind of confusing sometimes. So, a little bit of background. The General Assembly has tasked you guys with the option to add some additional sales tax onto the current levied sales tax. So we can add a fourth of a cent. We'll get into what that means exactly, because it's a lot of crazy quarter cent, one fourth of a cent. And so, the one big thing that we'd like to mention is that it does not affect people for gas, prescription medications, unprepared foods. So when you go to the grocery store and you're buying fruits and vegetables, it's not going to add on anything to that. The important thing, though, is that it affects everybody. So when you decide to raise property taxes, that just affects property owners. This affects everybody. We always talk about this affects everybody coming to Busco Beach on the weekends as well. Anybody who travels through our county pays this tax as well. You guys are looking, of course, for alternative revenue. The cost of things are not going down, so how can we look at more revenue without raising that burden on the property owners? And then the deadline to pass a resolution for the Board of Elections is July 31st. That resolution is coming up next on your agenda. A quick look at a glance across the state, the ones in green are those that are at 7% or higher. And I say or higher because you can see here Wake, Mecklenburg, Orange, and Durham are both above seven, are all above 7%. Those are all tied to transportation projects. That's not what we're looking at doing, but you can see that there's a pretty even split. And when you're traveling to places like Wake and Durham, you're paying above 7% for everything that you purchase. How does it affect me? It's really plain and simple that if you make a $4 purchase, you will pay one extra penny in sales tax. If you make a $100 purchase, it goes up a quarter, and if you make a $400 purchase, it's one extra dollar. And so, I like to think about how many times I walk and see a penny laying on the ground and don't even think anything of it. It's a very small amount in the grand scheme of things. But what does that mean for us? So if this sales tax referendum passes, $2.8 million for Wayne County, that's our latest estimate, whereas a one cent property tax increase is only $900,000. This allows the Board to possibly look at lowering property taxes if this passes. We can provide better service to our residents with this. I mean, $2.8 million is, that's no small amount there. And then sometimes you're actually already paying this tax. So if you, we got really technical, Allison and I, if you look at a spreadsheet and look at it, there are times where your tax is getting rounded up already, and that money's just going to the state. And so, sometimes you're actually already paying this. So that's important. What does this fund? We've got a new health and DSS facility. These kind of capital improvements that the county and the Board are working on right now, that's what this stuff can fund. Public safety EMS, Sheriff 911. We've got ambulances that have to stay on the roads, so when you call 911, somebody shows up. Landfill convenience centers, school construction and improvements, the library, senior center of veteran services, these are just a few of the things that this sales tax can help fund if it passes. So there it is. Additional sales tax revenue is better services and lower property taxes. That's what people want. So how are we going to let people know? We've come up with a campaign called Moving Wayne Forward for the local sales and use tax. All of these projects, this sales tax money, will all go towards Moving Wayne Forward. And we want to be able to highlight those projects that this sales tax funds. And so you'll see this a whole lot more for projects that get funded. But ultimately, it's up to the voters, right? So the voters will be the ones to decide if this sales tax passes. You'll see our information through our standard channels, social media, our website. We're going to have a whole lot of information on the website once this passes, if it passes from you guys. And we'll have that link just about everywhere with frequently asked questions, so we urge people to go check that out. Video PSAs, some radio PSAs. Our community partners, we're going to get out in the community and talk with them as well, so that people can hear directly from staff. And then also tax bills. Tax bills are about to go out, and we have a new newsletter that we'll be including in all the tax bills that'll have some information about it as well, in addition to everything that, all the big major capital projects that we have going on right now. So a quick recap, sales tax applies to everyone, not just property owners. Again, we like to stress that this excludes gas, prescription medication, and non-prepared foods. This will allow the commissioners to lessen the burden on the property owners. And think of it like this, one penny on a $4 purchase, one quarter to a $100 purchase, and $1 on a $400 purchase. How will you decide? You will see something similar to this on your ballot in November, and if it passes, coming up next, the voters will decide how they want to fund the school construction, all the improvements and the services. And we hope that we can move Wayne forward just a little bit more. Any questions for me?
No, great job. Again, we are going to the voters and ask them to support this. And I think your point was well taken. A lot of times when they're rounding it up, they can't charge you 6.75, can't split that penny. So really, a lot of times, people are already paying it. It's already paid. But it goes into the state coffers, and we want to keep it here in Wayne County.
Absolutely. And this applies to everyone. There's a lot of visitors that come through and spend money here, and that burden goes to everyone and not just those that own property, our farmers and things like that that have a lot of property. And so, you know, we certainly understand that voting for a tax is a little bit tough sometimes. I get it. But when you look at the alternatives, it's not bad.
And Joe, can you explain if someone shops online, how that works as well?
Yeah, so with your major retailers like, and Allison may be a better resource, but I know with Amazon and stuff like that, all that money is still, the sales tax is still collected. I know it gets super technical about if you have a location in the state and things like that. Do you know what I'm talking about? I think if you have a brick and mortar store in the state, you have to click sales tax. I know Amazon, of course, the General Assembly made them start taking sales tax out. So I think a lot of your online retailers are doing that now.
In fact, most of them are now. They used to be that you had to have a store, but now they are, I think you all are seeing as you're buying online, they're charging you the sales tax. So.
The legislature changed that a couple of years ago. That's the reason that the sales taxes collections have been so much better.
Yeah. And, you know, it saved a lot of local governments during COVID, you know what I mean? We're still collecting that sales tax from the online retailers, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Great job, Joe.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
The extra money does not go to the state. The extra money goes to the merchant.
Goes to the merchant? Oh, interesting, okay. They don't round up when they send in their reports, huh? Okay.
It's good boy.
It is a good boy.
Very good.
And our next item under New Business?
Would be a resolution supporting the quarter cent sales tax on the November 8th, 2022 general election ballot in Wayne County.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Resolution 2022-27 to place the quarter cent sales tax on the November ballot.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
The presentation that was just given to you said that there was 2.8 million. This says 2.6, so you might need to change. Change what?
And I have heard both figures in the past week, 2.6 and 2.8, so.
Well, since they've already got their presentation together, if you would, amend your motion to include that as 2.8?
So move.
I'm going to think positive. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we're going to go forth with that on the November ballot. We are way ahead of time here today. We're moving fast, aren't we? Give us a few days off, you know, for vacation, and we can move a little faster. I'm going to ask our Human Resources Director, Ginger Moore, to come forth and introduce some of these fine folks that we've got in our audience here.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. As you know, one of the goals of the Board of Commissioners this year was to implement a summer youth employment program. And we work closely with our coordinator, Ms. Alicia Pierce. She has done a phenomenal job taking this program, and she really molded and made it fit in Wayne County. So what I'd like to do is have each one of our interns stand up and introduce themselves and say which department they're working in, and kind of, so you can meet them.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll start, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nyera Skedea. I work with Veteran Services. I'm really happy to be here. It's really a great experience to see real life things and to be prepared whenever we have to plug in our own.
Great.
Good morning. My name is Jalen Mason. I am working at the Wayne Executive Jetport, and thank you so much for this opportunity. Like Nyera said, it is really eye-opening, and I appreciate that.
Ginger. Will you have them come to the podium? We can't hear them.
Now you got to come to the podium.
My name is Alice Angretitis. I work as an emergency medical service intern. It's very good to be here. I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity.
All right.
Hi, I'm Sanai Rayner. I work at the EMS department, and like everyone else, I'm very appreciative for this opportunity.
Good morning. My name is Ian Whipke. I'm currently interning at the Soil and Water Department. It's very great to be exposed to something I've never thought about doing, and I'm thankful for the experience.
Hello, my name is Daryl Swenson, and I work at the, or I'm interning at the Registered Deeds, and I'm very glad that all of us get to experience this, because it is a good experience for us to have for work experience as well, so, yeah.
Hi, how are y'all doing today?
Good.
My name's Emma Fermit. I'm an intern at the Maxwell Center, and I'm very appreciative. I've got to work with some very cool people, James Wade and all of them. I enjoy it a lot. It is really fun between setting up events and helping at the front desk. I've met all kinds of people from all kinds of places, so I'm really appreciative.
Right.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Young. I work at the IT Department, and I wanted to thank you all for letting me have this opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Good morning.
I am Ty Hamer Yerberton. I'm a recent graduate from Fayetteville State University, and I work in public affairs as an intern. You all have seen me at the groundbreaking, and it's good to see you all, and I'm thankful for this opportunity, able to give back to not just Goldsboro, but also to Wayne County as a native of Wayne County. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good morning to you all. I am Destiny Wood, and I'm also an intern at Emergency Medical Services, and it is amazing to see what they do. It's an experience to see what the medical services does and how many calls they respond to in a day, and how serious the calls can get, and it's a pleasure to be here before you all.
Great, thank you.
My name is Thomas Nevens, and I'm at the Wayne County Facility Services, and I'm appreciative of this good learning opportunity. Thank you.
My name is Leesa Saint-Joann. As an immigrant in the United States, I'm really appreciative to see what y'all do here. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maya Morales. I recently graduated from Southern High School. I work at Literacy Connections, and I'm grateful for this opportunity that has been given to me, and thank you for having me.
Great.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rosa Anzares, and I work at the Cooperative Extension, and I'm really great, happy to be there, and it's really amazing place, and I didn't even know existed before this program. And it has been an amazing experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Karina, oh, sorry, Karina Guzman. I'm an intern at the Services on Aging, and I'm really happy to be here, because there's a lot of things we didn't know before that I do know now. A lot of things I learned over these days and weeks, and I'm just appreciative of all of you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anaya Jardine, and I work at the Wayne County Public Library as an intern, and I really like the layout of this room.
Hello, my name is Andrew Reynolds. I work in the Animal Services Department, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Marcus Plank. I'm a college student. I attend Appalachian State University, going into my second year, and I work in the Planning Department, and I just want to say I'm appreciative of being exposed to different career fields that I've never really considered or really thought about before.
Thank you.
My name is Macy Salz. I am a former Eastern Wayne student, and now I am a sophomore at North Carolina State University. I am interning with Julie Graham at the Existing Industry. I love it there. There's so much there that I didn't even know existed. It's crazy how many industries actually like really help the economic status of Wayne County, everything like that, and it's great to be a part of such a strong community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alicia Hayden. I'm an upcoming junior at the University of North Carolina at Temple Hill, and I'm actually a biology major, but working in the summer youth program has opened my eyes to the opportunities that I could have within the local government and kind of makes me want to come home. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I'm an intern at the Services on Aging.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Malia Cox. I'm an intern at the Human Resource Office, and I really like it, and I get to work with some cool people like Ms. Ginger. And, yeah.
All right.
Good morning. My name's Anaja Williams. I'm a rising junior at Eastern Wayne, and I'm an intern at Animal Services, and I'm grateful to be here.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Janaya Williams. I'm currently an intern in the offices of Emergency Services. I just feel blessed to have this opportunity and to meet all the amazing people that I've met and to, just to have this experience, so thank you.
Thank you.
We got more?
Hello, I'm Audrey Williams. I'm a rising senior at Spring Creek High School, and I work with this Staff Attorney's Office. I want to thank all of y'all for this opportunity. There's many departments that I didn't know existed, like the Staff Attorney's Office, and I'm very grateful for this experience, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Hello, good morning. I work at the Wayne Register, my name is Joanne Spinoza. I work at the Wayne Registers of Deeds. I thank you so much for this great opportunity you were able to provide for us. It was an amazing, this has been an amazing experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Krisma Barber, and I'm an intern in the Financial Department up here in the courthouse. I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've learned a lot, and I'm grateful that I was able to have this experience.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Michaela Cobb. I work in the Finance Department, and it's been a great experience meeting new people and learning new things.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Justice Wu. I'm a recent graduate from Goldsboro High School, and I work in, I'm an specialist intern, and I just want to say I'm thankful for the opportunity to come here today and get an insight on local government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
My name's Gavin Schmidt. I just graduated from Charles V ACOG. I'm interning at Emergency Medical Services right now, and it's been a lot of fun, riding on the ambulances, being a lot of different situations, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Hassan Williams. I'm a sophomore at Charles V ACOG, and I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to talk to Ms. Pierce really quick.
Sure, Ms. Pierce, you'll come forward. You've headed this program up and have done one fantastic job. So come up here and.
I thank you all this morning. Thank you so much.
Ms. Pierce, first off, I want to thank you and thank Ginger and the staff and the Board for supporting this program. You did an amazing job, and I want to give kudos to all the young people that were part of this project, because, I mean, you guys are amazing. You articulate yourself very well. Keep up the great work. I see you guys are future leaders. You're future leaders. So just keep, keep doing what you're doing, you know, stars are the limits. And when, you know, and make sure you come back here. We need you here.
Thank you.
Just a moment, if I might. And normally, we don't try to pat each other on the back, but in this case, I feel like that we really do need to pat Commissioner Antonio Williams on the back, because this was his idea, and he sold this board on it, and it was an easy sale. But that said, we really task our department managers and our county to put this program together in just a few months. A lot of times, counties take years to get this formulated. So you really were under the gun and did a fantastic job, as we could see, because I did not see one bashful student come to this microphone. They all came and they shared with everyone this, their program and their insights and so on. So it's, this is what it was all about, and that was to try to offer something to our students to come and get involved with the local government, see what it's about, because as many of you stated, you had no idea that some of these things were going on in some of the departments that we have. So I'll turn the floor over to you now to give us some insight on yours.
Well, the program has been great. We do, I agree with you guys, have some amazing interns that are involved. They interviewed well. They've also had some additional training on Wednesdays, as well as they have, I've started hearing from the different departments every Wednesday, which has been enlightening not just to them, but myself as well. And so we've covered in these trainings thus far, like how to be at work, attitude at work. We also relooked at resumes. We did an escape room, which one of the, actually, the post-secondary students is, five of them, they've covered a lot of these trainings. They actually worked with the high school and gave them experience from their post-secondary opinions about college life and just life in general, understanding the different variables there. And then we're also going to have some financial literacy coming up as well. So we have just, we're excited to be able to show them what to do with those checks that they're getting and how to utilize them appropriately. And so we just, again, I am with everyone else, grateful that we are doing this program for the opportunity that I had to also be a part. I do have a lot of work-based learning experience, so it did kind of help to bring in some of the thoughts and experiences I had, and then I was able to share them with Ms. Moore, and then, of course, I don't know anything about HR, so she was able to do the HR part. So it has just been great. We've all worked together. I get excited going in on Fridays to do the visits and just to see the students at work, and I mean, to see the directors and individuals that they've assigned in their departments working with the students, and watching these students and these interns really do the work. I was concerned, oh, they may just be sitting. No, everybody's putting them to work, which is great, and again, we say thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes, sir. I want to personally thank you and everyone else involved in it, and as Commissioner Williams says, and I've said numerous times before, these young people, they're the future. They may not be the future of Wayne County, but they're going to be the future somewhere. I mean, you know, we're not going to live forever, and they're in their positions now, and as they said, they've learned things that they didn't even know existed. Trust me, when I came on this board, I thought I knew it all, but when I got up here, I found out I didn't know a whole lot about government. And they're, they're learning firsthand, and thank y'all so much. And, you know, next year? Next year?
Yes, I'm trying to do it again.
More kids next year.
More kids, absolutely.
More departments involved.
Board of departments.
And more media. We didn't get enough media attention. This is a wonderful thing. And I would have hoped, that would have been my hope, that we'd have got more media attention. And I want to clarify, this is something special for a county. Now, counties have municipalities that have summer employments, but no county in North Carolina has done this. We're the first.
Really?
Yes.
That's great. That is great. We always like to be trailblazers. Thank you so much. We'll, we'll try to expand it next year.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that in mind, I, it's 9:30 and I'm going to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustment meeting. Our oaths were administered on April the 6th of 21. This is a public hearing to receive public comments on a special use permit for Oxbow Solar LLC, a solar energy facility located in Indian Springs Township in the vicinity of Emmett Church Road, Arrington Bridge Road, and Sleepy Creek Road. So with that in mind, I will turn that over to Barry Gray.
Before we do that, anyone who is speaking at this public hearing will have to be sworn in. So I have the oath, if you all will just come stand up here, that would be great.
Well, we've got a lot of people going to testify today. Okay, I'll let you do the swearing in.
Okay. If everyone please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll, I'll start off with this, this Board of Adjustment hearing, just giving you an overview of the case. I believe it's been a few years since we have seen a solar utility facility come before you. And of course, it is not the first one. We have, I believe, probably over 20 at this point in the county. But this one is probably one of the larger, if not the largest, solar utility facility we have seen. So again, this is the Board of Adjustment because this is a special use permit. And I'll begin by saying that this is in the Indian Springs Township, this is in the southern part of the county, just south of Goldsboro. If you're familiar with the area, they're around Emmett Church Road, Arrington Bridge Road, and Sleepy Creek Road, that kind of serves as a triangle. This facility is kind of located in the middle of those roads there, south of Goldsboro. The owner is Sleepy Creek Farms, G and L Ag Properties, Helling Cavernous Heirs and Anne Herring Heirs. And the developer is Pine Gate Renewables and they are present here today with representatives to speak as well. Since this is in Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, Air Force Base's airspace control surface area, that does mean that basically all special uses, even solar farms, we do send those to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base for review and for comment. So we did do that. Additionally, we do have a site plan that has been submitted as well for the solar farm and again, that is what's before you today for review and approval. Now let me go back to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base really quick. We did receive comments from them and there are a few conditions of approval that we're asking for, some concerns that they had. And I'll mention those really quick. We did receive a comment that they're requesting that the project owner should partner with the United States Department of Agriculture Representatives at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to allow USDA access to the project to observe and collect real-time data, excuse me, and provide mitigation strategies to reduce bird attractants. Also, the project owner should implement long-term bird mitigation efforts onsite as part of the development plan. And then the project owner should implement and share an accompanying scientific study to capture pre and post-construction bird wildlife data for applicability to the larger US Air Force and Department of Defense and FAA discussions. Of course, this is as a result of the size of the farm and the concern that it does have an appearance of water and may attract smaller birds. And of course, with smaller birds, then you attract birds of prey that fly at higher altitude. So their concern is the potential that that could have on their low-flying aircraft. So the applicant has agreed to work with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and vice versa. They already are in discussions to move forward with identifying some of these concerns and moving forward with, with these studies that have been requested. And since this is a special use permit, you can approve this with conditions. And what we recommend is if you do decide to move forward with approval, that you approve it with those three conditions that I mentioned, and I do include those in your report, those conditions that were mentioned by Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. And then once, if, when this moves forward with construction, staff will require that these conditions be addressed and that Seymour Johnson Air Force Base give us an affirmative that they are agreeing that they have completed what was requested and that they're comfortable with that. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Gray?
Yes. Were there any community members that had any issues with this proposed solar farm?
Yeah, I have received, I did receive a phone call last week from a neighboring property owner who stated that she did, and I think possibly a couple of other family members or neighbors had some concerns and that they planned to be at the meeting today.
Okay. Thank you.
In regards to the conditions that Seymour Johnson placed here, it is basically stating that the project owner should implement long-term bird mitigation efforts. Have they submitted any proposal?
No, not at this point. They are working with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and their, some of their representatives to iron out what that plan would look like and what that long-term plan would look like. So right now, they're in discussions in terms of how to move forward with that at this point. So they do have a plan in place from what I understand. The applicant has some more information on that that he can provide as well in terms of their discussions and, and what their plan is moving forward to address that concern.
So if this board determines to allow for the special use permit, if these conditions are not met, would the special use permit then be canceled?
Right. If it does not, if they do not meet the conditions, we will not issue any permits to move forward and of course, the special use permit would then expire and, and would not move forward. That's correct.
But to me, it looks like it's an ongoing thing.
It is and the meeting they had, the applicant had with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, we sat in on that, the last meeting they had to start off discussions on this. And, and from what I understand, the type of studies that they're looking at will take probably an extended period of time. I think the long-range goal of the applicant is this would be built out, built several years from now, quite a few years, so it won't be built within the next year or two from what I understand. So that would give them time to work through these plans with the Air Force Base and do detailed studies that are needed.
How mu- This is a large facility. Can you give us an explanation of how large a facility we're speaking of?
This is about, I'm forecasting about 1,700 acres, so it's 145 megawatts. Of course, usually when you see a solar farm, they usually average around 20, I put it wrong, around 20 to 30 to maybe 40 megawatts. So this was 145, so it is significantly larger than what you typically see. We kind of compared, Julio Grito in my office took it and kind of overlaid it on some areas of the county just to get a concept of size and it, pretty much about the size of Walnut Creek, the village of Walnut Creek. So that's about the size of this facility.
So they are intending to use 1,700 acres?
Right now, their plan is to use potentially 1,700 acres. Probably when they do their detailed work and they come in for construction, it may actually shrink somewhat because they may find that there's some areas that are wetlands that might, you know, riparian buffers with streams that have to stay out of. So there may be some tweaking of that, but the maximum it would be, would be 1,700 acres. So there is that potential.
There have been concerns that have been expressed in the past in regards to decommissioning these solar farms. Could you give us an explanation of what regulations Wayne County has in place on decommissioning?
I can, yes, sir. We do require a, that the applicant submit a decommissioning plan, which they have. And that decommissioning plan, and I'll kind of, just kind of briefly just mention these highlights here. There's, those plans define the conditions which, which decommissioning will be initiated, so basically the end of the lease. They'll identify removal of all non-utility-owned equipment. Rest they'll identify in that plan, the restoration of the property to the conditions they were prior to the construction. They identify the timeframe for completion. And they'll identify the party that's responsible for that decommissioning as well. And then also, if there's any updates to that plan over the years, they're required to submit that to us. And basically, the concept is that these plans are in place to ensure that these facilities are removed and the land is restored back. And because utility facilities, they go in on post, I guess you could say, they don't go in and do a lot of mass grading, so typically the concept is that they will lift those back out of the ground and that ground, that, that property can be restored back easily to its pre-construction condition and be farmed again or, or developed in another way. But, but the concept is to have as little impact on the land underneath those, those panels as possible so it can be reused.
And they have submitted a decommissioning?
We do have that, yes, sir.
How many years is the lease? Possibly.
Now that, I'll have to defer to the, to the applicant on that. I don't have that information.
Okay.
Barry, do you know about what percentage of this is woodland and which is, how much is farmland?
I did not run the numbers on that, but looking at it, I would say probably, it's probably about half and half, I'm thinking. So there will be some areas that they will have to clear in there, but, but it's probably about half and half.
Okay, any further questions? Back to Mr. Gray.
Thank you. And applicant, like I said, is present and they probably can provide more detailed information as well if you have further questions for them also.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dave McLaughlin. I am with Pine Gate Renewables. I'm a manager of project permitting. Normally, Tom Terrell, our lawyer with Fox Rothschild, would be doing this presentation, but he has COVID today. So you get me instead. Yeah, so I am just gonna defer to our subject matter experts on the special use criteria and I'll just give a rundown of who will be speaking.
Okay.
And before we go into that, if you all have any other questions you would like to circle back to that you asked Barry earlier, I may be able to speak to those more clearly as well.
Did you know how long the lease is?
Okay, so it's a, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. My understanding, it's a 20-year lease and then option for a 20-year extension in five-year increments.
Okay. Thank you.
So the lifespan of the project is up to 40 years.
That's pretty, pretty standard in the.
Yes, that's, that's pretty much standard for the industry now.
I gotta ask, what is the life expectancy of one of the solar panels?
At this stage, you know, 25 to 30 years. Yeah, and still maintaining approximately 90% efficiency at that time. So generally speaking, one of these farms would get developed and if there are panels that are defective, they would get replaced as they need to be replaced throughout the lifespan of the project as well. So if there are defective panels, that's what would happen.
So did I, did I understand you say that a panel generally has a life expectancy up to 30 years at 90%?
I think about 90% of what it originally, what its original efficiency was.
Really? That's pretty good. Technology has really improved, hasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll.
All right, so I'll just give you a rundown on who will be speaking to which parts. So you all have the binders in front.
We do.
All right, so if you'll open to statement of general compliance. All right. All right, speaking to part A and, and more general as well, will be Reynolds Neely. He's a planner with over 45 years of experience. Speaking to parts, part B will be Tommy Cleveland, professional engineer. Speaking to part C and E will be Jen Lester with Kimley Horn. And speaking to part D will be Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'll just defer to them at this point and then I can come back and answer any other questions you have. So I will start with Tommy Cleveland.
Good morning, Board. My name's Tommy Cleveland. I'm a professional engineer in North Carolina. I've been working in solar industry for about 15 years. Started out at, working at North Carolina State University at a group that was called North Carolina Solar Center where I started. They changed names to North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. But I was working there as an engineer when the solar industry at this kind of utility scale started in the state and a lot of questions about potential health and safety impacts or other community impacts came to my group at NC State. So going back, you know, over 10 years, I started developing an expertise on the kind of questions that communities have about this kind of development, particularly health or safety impacts. This project is larger than a lot of the projects around, but it's using the same technology that's standard in the industry, used at literally hundreds of other smaller but similar solar farms across North Carolina. And, you know, so I've looked closely at potential health and safety impacts. The primary impact is very positive. It's producing emission-free electricity, that's meaning other power plants don't have to generate that same electricity, so they're burning less coal or natural gas. And that's a positive impacts to the environment, positive impacts to health, public health and safety. But there are concerns people have about this technology and I've submitted a public health and safety assessment report to send the binder, although I think you've got an older version in there when the project was considering including batteries. So that report covers batteries, but this project has taken the batteries out of the plan, so there will be no batteries in this project. But some common concerns are toxicity of the panels, EMF, radiation from any of the equipment, fire hazards. So I can address any specific questions you have, but I can say, you know, across all those topics, there are topics I've looked at real closely and I'm confident to say there's no public health risk or concern to public health from any of those topics. That's my professional opinion that if this project's developed as is planned, there would be no material danger to public health or safety. And if you have any questions on any of those things, I'd be glad to.
I think you were to also discuss in regards to the proposed use does not adversely affect the general plans or physical development of, for the county. It will not be contrary to the purposes stated in this regulation. I think you were to address that as well.
No, I think we've switched orders of how we're going to introduce. I think the next speaker will cover.
Okay.
Cover that topic.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman. I've understood you letters to the neighbor, I guess, that owned the property around this project. Did you have many attendants there?
I'm not the best one to answer that. I've just got this expertise on health and safety that, yeah, Brandon, it looks like you could answer that.
I noticed in the letter you had for the Wayne County Public Library, but you had Elizabeth Town, it says the town instead of Goldsboro.
That is correct, Commissioner Acock. I believe we sent out replacement letters to correct that misconception that we initially had. had. That was initially a type of, we did hold two community engagement meetings. One occurred on May 10th at the Wayne County Public Library from, I believe, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And we did follow up in a virtual format for those that could not attend that evening. The following Tuesday on May 17th, from, again, 6:00 to 8:00 PM virtually.
Commissioner Acock.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, who's our next speaker?
Next speaker will be Jen Lester with Kimley Horn. And she's going to speak to parts C and E.
C and D.
E.
E. Okay. Keep me on track here now.
Good morning. My name is Jen Lester. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, currently employed as a civil engineer at Kimley Horn and Associates. So just going to give you a brief overview of the site plan. This is just a blown-up version of the version that you have in your binders in front of you. So like discussed previously, the overall parcel is about 1,700 acres. The gray hatch that's shown across most of the site would be the maximum array extent of what would be disturbed. That includes the panels, it includes the fence, the erosion control basins, anything that would need to be cleared for shading. So it's not the entire footprint, and that maximum extent is approximately 1,400 acres at the very high end. So around the perimeter of the site, we're also setback from all property lines through the required setbacks. So that's 65 foot from any right-of-way. It's 25 foot from most other parcels and then 50 foot from any residential parcels. You'll see green or yellow lines around the perimeter. So those are the vegetative buffers that would be proposed on-site. The green would be anywhere where existing vegetation already exists. If there are trees, if there is evergreen or deciduous vegetation, we would leave that in place. We wouldn't try to clear it. Anywhere where existing vegetation does not exist, so some of those existing farmlands, we would be planting a 25-foot evergreen buffer. Let's see. So running through east-west along the site, down here, is the existing overhead transmission line. So that's the point where all of the power that would be generated on the project would be connected into the electrical grid. Let's see. There's already been an environmental delineation done on the site, so that streams and wetlands, which would be avoided. If any impacts are required for something like a road crossing, that would be permitted accordingly through the Army Corps of Engineers. Really, this is just the first step in the process. So before the site can be built, detailed design will be done. That'll be submitted to Wayne County for the building permit. It'll be submitted to the NCDQ for our land disturbance, and it would be submitted to the NCDOT for our driveway encroachments. In my professional opinion, this meets all the requirements of the Wayne County Site Plan portion of your ordinance, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about erosion control, about stormwater, or site civil design.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, how many homes will be around this site?
That is a better question, actually, for Nick, who's here to talk to you about properties and property appraisal.
Okay, you mentioned the transmission line.
Yes.
Who is this? Is it Duke Energy?
It's Duke Energy.
Well, I knew in that area of Tri-County as well, so I didn't know whether or not you were selling to Tri-County or Duke.
No, I believe.
Tri-County's facilities are even smaller than this. Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up will be Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. He will be addressing part D.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a certified general real estate appraiser in the state of North Carolina, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia. I'll quickly answer your question. Normally, we have it written out explicitly how many. There is 133 adjoining properties, and 85% or so have a residence on them or are small single-family lots that could support a residence. Calculator says that's about 113 or so adjoining residences of the 133. Specifically, the closest house will not be closer than 120 feet from the structure of the house to the closest panel, with an average distance of 524 feet when looking at the existing residences all around. But at Kirkland Appraisals, we've looked at hundreds of solar farms. We've looked at about 860 solar farms across the country, the vast majority of which have been located along the eastern seaboard, with most of them being from North Carolina, Virginia, and South Carolina. We've found that in general, solar farms primarily adjoin residential and agricultural adjoining uses. The proposed site is very similar to what we typically see with not only some, but most of the adjoining uses being residential and agricultural. And so based on this, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will be a harmonious use in the proposed location. And furthermore, in order to determine whether or not it could impact the existing homes that are around it, we've done what's called a matched pair or a paired sales analysis. So this is a methodology supported by the Appraisal Institute, and it's outlined in detail in the Appraisal Institute textbook, Real Estate Damages by Dr. Randall Bell. What we've done is we've compared a home sale next to an existing solar farm with three to five similar nearby home sales that were not next to a solar farm in order to measure for any difference. We have 94 matched pairs, which indicate no significant impact to the adjoining property value. Those have a range of impacts to that adjoining property from negative 10% to the value to positive 10%, with an overall average and median of positive 1% for both average and median. This is a strong indication of no impact to the adjoining property values, not a mild positive or anything like that. It's a strong indication of no significant impact to those properties that adjoin a solar farm. And so based on this, it's my professional opinion that the proposed solar farm will not impact the adjoining property values, and I'm happy to go into more detail or explain anything or answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I think that was one of my biggest concerns, is that, you know, it would lower the property values of homeowners, and, you know, that's something that's significant when someone purchases a property.
That's clearly something that's a concern, and that's where the closest home being 120 feet away, we have homes that close that have sold for, again, comparable values to properties that are not next to a solar farm, which is a strong indication of no impact. In fact, we've got examples of over million-dollar homes selling within 200 feet of solar farms showing no impact for being adjacent to solar farms.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up will be Reynolds Neely. If you turn to the conformity with county plans tab.
The one I already jumped to.
Yeah, I got you jumping around. You'll find his report as well.
Good morning. Good morning. From LRB here. My name is Reynolds Neely. I have been in the planning business for 45 years, over 30 of them with the city of Ashboro, ultimately being the community development director. I have been a consultant for about half of that time for small towns and counties around the area. And I have written solar farm ordinances. I've administered solar farm ordinances in my duties in the past. So I'm very familiar with these reports. Specifically, I am addressing the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations. Now, as you're aware, Wayne County does not zone the entire county. The solar farm ordinance applies county-wide. The Air Force review area is county-wide or within their sphere of influence, but the zoning itself does not apply. But due to the solar farm ordinance, you bring in the special use permit process from the zoning ordinance. If you look at my report on page two, I basically state as a summary that in my professional opinion, this particular solar farm does not impact any of your plans for development. If you look at page three, you see that I have a general analysis of the project, and I'm not going to bore you with reading through that. On page four, the proposed use does not adversely affect general plans, so I get into the detail of that in particular.
Excuse me. You're referring to pages here. Where are you at?
Right here, when you go page four, you're gonna have to go back.
It's under the tab, conformity with county plan. I'm sorry.
Conformity, okay. I see it now. All right.
Okay, so.
Well, you give us a mighty large binder here.
I understand, and it scares me too. I appreciate that. Wayne County growth strategy map, I discuss that on page five. You have certain growth strategy areas from urban to rural. I discuss from your plan those different areas. And if you then turn to page eight, I have your vision statement from your plan and some other statements from the plan. You also have vision statements within your plan. If you start on page nine, take each of your vision statements and analyze them against this proposed project and determine whether that particular vision statement may not be applicable to this type of development or that the project is not inconsistent with that statement using the language of your plan. So I'd be glad to speak to any of those vision statements specifically, but they're each And then if we get over to, let's see, we keep going. I would also like to point out that in addition to meeting your vision statements, that the North Carolina courts have ruled that appearance is not a relevant factor in analyzing solar farms or other things like cell towers in a special use process. And that if you have met the standards of the ordinance, which these other experts have testified to, that is a presumption that we are in harmony with your ordinance. I've also reviewed your comprehensive transportation plan, your noise ordinance, your flood prevention ordinance, the Seymour Johnson AICUZ update, air installation compatible use zone plan, the adopted solar ordinance. And after reviewing all of these, I have a conclusion on page 18 that after a paragraph restating a lot of things, it says it is in my professional opinion, the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations. I'll be glad to specifically address any of that or answer your questions.
Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead. Commissioner Acock.
I'm trying to, I think I know about where we're talking about, and I know we had the flood when Floyd come through all in this area.
Yes, sir.
And there's a lot of property that, you know, we can't sell because of FEMA. Is it lawful to use FEMA property to use for solar farms and stuff?
Well, the property itself, if the map were up here, there is just in the very northern corner, some of the flood zone.
Right.
That piece of property is in the buffer. There will be no development according to my review of the site plan on that. The Kimley Horn representative might be able to speak to that better. So that's not really an issue since those areas will not be involved.
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you.
Any other question?
And I would just add that in 45 years, I've never found a use that is any less impactful than a solar farm. Because at the end of its life, you can go back to farming or build a subdivision, expand your urban areas, whatever use you want. It's kind of like a placeholder, and it really creates no negative impacts.
Okay, any other question? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thinking, just to clarify, we don't develop in the 100-year floodplain. We also, any wetlands that have been identified, we apply a 50-foot buffer to minimum. So there's no development in wetlands or floodplain with the exclusion of possibly utility crossings, which would usually fall under a nationwide permit. I think that concludes who's presenting. I did want to return to the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base just to give some clarifying information there. You all may already have questions lined up about that. But with regard to their request for mitigation plans in place, so in our discussion with the base, they did not identify any specific mitigation in their, what they preferred we do is allow for a baseline of a one-year study on-site to get a baseline pre-development. It would continue post-development should the project be developed as well, so they can get a before and after picture. And somewhere along the way of doing that baseline study, they would develop mitigation strategies that they recommend that we employ. We have agreed to employ any reasonable mitigation strategies that they recommend.
I got some questions. No, not the Seymour Johnson. What kind of timeframe do you project the project taking from start to finish?
Okay, so the project is currently in Duke's RFP, so Request for Proposal Q. Should that be awarded, our goal would be development in 2026 approximately.
How many employees do you think will be on-site?
On-site during construction? Any other?
Approximately 400 plus.
400 plus.
On-site during construction, post-construction, very minimal.
What do you project to cost the project?
Cost the project?
Upon completion.
This is obviously back of the envelope.
While he's getting that together, will you be hiring individuals from Wayne County?
So we, our partner company is Blue Ridge Power. They're based out of Fayetteville, North Carolina currently. So that's who we're relying for most of it. Blue Ridge Power is piloting a program right now called Power Up, which is partnering with community colleges in areas to enable and educate community members on how to get these jobs and work on-site. So, you know, that would be contingent upon someone having a job at Blue Ridge Power.
That doesn't make me happy because, you know, that's what we like. We like to employ, you know, local people here.
Yeah, that's an advice you're turning out today, which is inspiring. You know, we would love to continue a conversation concerning partnering with the community college here then. And, you know, this Power Up program is definitely expanding. It's nascent right now. I think our first class just graduated within the last two years, but there's a strong appetite for it. And with the 2026 build-out date, I don't see a reason that if the community college had an appetite for it, that we couldn't have a program up and running, which would provide potential employment to members of the community here in education.
I'd love that to be a discussion that, you know, you bring.
Yeah, we'd love to continue that discussion with you.
And then discussing, you know, you mentioned the community college and partnered with If this was, you know, if you partnered with them and this is a program that they are not involved in right now. When you say partner with them, any new program that comes, you know, to a community college, we've got a great community college here in Wayne County, you know, we always look at the fund. I mean, when you say partner, is that including in the partner any financial assistance to the college or?
So I don't speak for that part of the company, so I don't want to misspeak, but I would be glad to put anybody in touch with our sister company, so that's Blue Ridge Power.
Duke has been very generous to Wayne Community Colleges in the past in several projects.
Come up with that figure.
Yeah, sorry. So it could be ranging from somewhere to $230 to $240 million.
$230 to $240 million. Back to Commissioner Williams' question, I mean, that is, some of those are skillset employ-
Back to Commissioner Williams' question, I mean, that is, some of those are skillset employees, employees.
Yes.
The next thing I want to ask, have, do y'all provide a, an emergency response plan to the first responders for a facility to this size? I know it's, it's got several accesses, you know, from knowing, knowing the property areas. It's got several roads, you know, that's going to be going through. But do you have a, an emergency response plan?
Is that part of the ordinance required? If it's part of the ordinance requirement, it definitely will be prepared. So at this stage, we obviously don't have an emergency response plan because we're so early in development.
I understand.
That can be a contingent of.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that it being, as being a large facility, I mean, that's something I think we need to, I mean, I mean, I'm sure y'all build facilities like this elsewhere in the country. I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so my, my assumption is there would be an emergency response plan.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Well, I think you've completed your presentation, is that correct?
Yeah, just one more point I noticed earlier, they're kind of, there's a little bit of concern about the size of the project. I would say relative to other projects that have been built. Just to provide some context as to why you're seeing a project of this scale versus, you know, a 20-megawatt facility that we've seen in the past. First of all, solar is growing rapidly, you know, not only in the Carolinas, but across the country. And realistically, the last decade, you know, rapid expansion. Part of House Bill 951's procurement strategy is aggressive decarbonization, which requires how many gigawatts of procurement in?
It's 80% carbon reduction by 2030, so how many gigawatts that?
I think it's up to eight gigawatts by 2030. So there are aggressive plans that are required. Part of what's driving this is many coal-fired plants coming offline, and we're looking for renewable replacements. So that's why you're seeing projects of this scale when you may have not seen them previously.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. If I may, my name is Brandon Miller. I'm the Associate Project Manager for the Oxbow Solar Project. If I may, I just wanted to get a chance to address Commissioner Williams' question about the employment here in Wayne County. It do, do, we're on the development side of the project, so we're not completely in sync with like the construction that is typically years down the line from when we're developing a project. But what I can speak to Commissioner Williams is that during the time of construction, roughly 25% of the people employed on the site will be temporary workers sourced from the local community. And during that time, they will be employed for roughly 12 to 18 months while the project is being built. We do plan to commence construction for this project in roughly quarter one of 2025, and it should end up, end, hit commercial operational around quarter four of 2026. So there's a good period of time in there where local workers will be able to build skills and they've been able to, build relationships, be able to have long-term employment, perhaps with Blue Ridge Power, our EPC provider. I definitely just wanted to take time to address that, but be happy to answer any other questions that the board may have.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. I know that there's been smaller facilities built here, and there are local people who actually get the opportunity to work. So you may have some, some people here already that are skillful when it comes to that, you know, skilled laborers at least.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I saw that we had a few people that were sworn in as well, and I know they wanted the opportunity to say.
Sure, I'm on call, so there's just more. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to speak? You all have previously been sworn, is that correct?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jane Bynum, and I live on Arrington Bridge Road. And my concern is that how close this is going to be to my house and everybody else's house on Arrington Bridge Road. And we haven't been talked to about this system. We don't know how it's going to fit our health. And that's my concern. I know I have seen these systems along the road, like Buckswand. I've seen them, they are a long way from people houses in Pikeville. Have rode through, I said, ooh, they're a long way from the people houses. And that's my concern, how close they're going to be to our houses and how it's going to fit our health.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that'd like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Katie Johnson Walker. I am a retired educator, teaching for 38 and a half years in the state of North Carolina, and a member of the Johnson family.
How many years was that again?
I taught 38 and a half years.
I wanted to get that on the record twice. And you don't have gray hair?
I got a little face color. And I'm a member of the Johnson family on the Arrington Bridge Road. I am here to oppose the approval of the special use permit requested by the Oxbow Solar LLC for a 1,270-acre solar farm in the Arrington Bridge Road, Emmett's Church Road, and Sleepy Creek Road in the Spring area. I'm requesting a delay of approval pending further study and review of data that addresses the concerns of the Johnson family that will be impacted by the proposed 1,270-acre Oxbow Solar Farm on the Arrington Bridge Road particularly. I have prepared a copy of my issues for your perusal and revisits to use before you vote for approval or disapproval. I would like to address the issues that bring us to this point today. To the members of the Wayne Board of Adjustments, again, I am Katie Johnson Walker, and I'm here representing my family, the Johnson family, whose property is part of the parcels listed in a notice I received on July 11, 2022, and our property that is adjacent to the parcels listed in the same communication. The communication was sent to me and my family from the planning department announcing the hearing to request approval of a special use permit for a solar farm to be erected by Oxbow Solar LLC. We, and we meaning me, Katie Johnson Walker, and my sister, Dr. Sadie Johnson Carter, were invited and attended the initial information meeting on March 17, 2022, at the Wayne County Public Library. At that meeting, there was no presentation and informations were limited. A map that was not legible enough to read was placed in the room on an easel for a person to ask questions. Without explanation or presentation, questions were not sufficiently answered. We expressed concerns at that time and requested information. Example, data, and to date, we have not received notice. We left our contact information so that we could be included in the decision of this 1,270-acre solar farm and its impact on our family and property. When we left the initial information meeting, we were assured that a hearing before the planning board would be held in June. And at that point, we could be included in the discussion. We received notification of a May 7 hearing, one workday, prior to occurring, which made it impossible for us to attend to hear the information being presented and speak to our concerns. We have supporting emails for verification. In a letter from Oxbow Solar dated July 3, 2022, it was indicated that an application for special use permit had received unanimous recommendation for approval based on testimony and reports submitted on behalf of Oxbow Solar LLC. While we requested and was assured we would receive information, we got nothing. We made no testimony or gave any reports, for we have not been consulted on anything. Our concerns are important and are as follows. Health and safety. In order to ensure the safety and health of all of our family, church family, and others included, and all the parcels and those adjacent to speak to the well-being and environmental impact. In addition to that fact, the church where family members worship, Johnson Chapel Church, is located on our property on Arrington Bridge Road, and the health and well-being of our attendees is a concern. Setbacks. Setbacks that are greater than 75 feet from homes and property lines. On March 17, we were told that the approximate setback would be 75 feet. Today, I'm hearing from this presentation that it was, that it's 100 feet. We believe 300 feet is a fair setback. Aerospace control. Concern for airspace controlled surface area. Since the letter speaks to airspace controlled surface area between Seymour Johnson F Base and the designated solar farm location, what data is available to support the long-term safety, health of all our family, current and heirs? Our property is located in the area. Seymour Johnson is behind our property, and the proposed solar farm would be in front. It appears our property would be meat in the sandwich. The property value. How would this large solar farm and thousands of solar panels affect the value of our property? Can we build, live, grow, and enjoy the beauty of our property? Can we get a fair value if we choose to sell it? We have family members who live in Michigan and in New York who anticipate moving and developing our property to live on it, to live on in the very near future. They plan to retire and enjoy the serene and beauty that it offers. Decommission responsibility. If the Oxbow Solar LLC should fold, whose responsibility would it be to remove the panels? The company or the landowners? It could potentially cost millions. Where is the data? Land after, land used after solar farm. In event that the solar farm is no longer used as a solar farm, can the land be used for farming, building a home, or any of those things our forefathers desired for us as our inheritors? Chemical radiation impact. How would Oxbow Solar assure the Johnson family and others on the Arrington Bridge Road track of this 1,270-acre solar farm that there will not be another Camp Lejeune victim situation? But this time, a Seymour Johnson Oxbow Solar victim regarding cancer, Parkinson disease, lung disease, and other health issues caused by chemical radiations that's generated by this solar activity, with the possibility of invading our bodies and causing serious illnesses due to solar rays. As you can see, we have a host of concerns listed. We voiced these concerns on March 17, 2022, but none have been answered or addressed in our, to our satisfaction. All of the concerns, health and safety issues are important. We are requesting a response that leaves no space, says blank. Finally, our ultimate request is that the Wayne County Board of Adjustments delay approval of Oxbow Solar LLC request for a special use permit pending further study and a review of data that addresses the health, safety, and welfare of the Johnson family and other citizens who will be affected by the Oxbow Solar Farm on Arrington Bridge Road, et cetera. We feel sure data is available, and we would like to have that data before this company moves forward. Thank you for your consideration in this serious and concerning manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Well, I, I think we have a crew that's leading. Y'all have a good day. We'll see you later on today at lunch. Yes, sir.
Yes, hello again. Once again, I'm Brandon Miller, Associate Project Manager for the Oxbow Solar Project. Much of what Ms. Walker just, you know, laid out, laid out to you all is true. We did get a chance to meet her and her sister on May the 10th at our in-person community meeting at the Wayne County Public Library. And we were able to speak to them there about some of their concerns that they had about the proximity of the project, as well as health and safety. The same health and safety report that was given to you all, that was completed by Tommy Cleveland, licensed professional engineer in North Carolina with a wealth of solar experience, was the same health and safety report that they received a physical copy of that day, albeit in a much shorter kind of conclusive format, to be able to be more digestible. It may be on our, you know, on our part that we did not follow up with an electronic copy of that, but that was something that was addressed and something that we've been actively trying to mitigate some of their concerns. Additionally, along that, along that time, since that meeting, we've been communicative about our plans regarding applying for the special use permit, attending the planning board meeting, as well as sending communications about this public hearing for them to come and provide testimony on their behalf. The ordinance requirements, has setback requirements that you've outlaid. And as you can hear from testimony from Nick Kirkland, the 100-foot minimum dwelling requirement setback is, you know, obviously being met there with not, with the closest property being 120 feet away from our project. If it comes down to it, it's not a huge deal for us to grant additional setbacks from the properties there. But just wanted to say that we have been trying to be communicative and being active and good neighbors in the process and doing so. But happy to answer any additional questions that you all may have.
How many properties are, are around the particular Oxbow Solar?
Yes, sir. So generally, most of the residential properties are along Arrington Bridge Road, where some of the Johnson family lives at. We do have some more residential properties along Sleepy Creek Road, albeit a small community that is really screened well by a large wooded area there, as well as a couple additional properties along Emmett's Church Road. So, but generally, those are the key areas there. It is a large, you know, culmination of land. We have over 40 parcels that we've grouped together. I will say that our anchor landowner is a large timber company with over 1,700 acres of pine that's planted there. So I know that something that may have came up earlier was out the percentage of between farmland and timberland for the property. I did want to note that the large percentage of it is planted lob-lolly pine right now that's being, you know, harvested and used for timber. Let's see. What else did she say? Trying to answer kind of all of the.
So, so, so I just heard you say you, you know, the company's willing to negotiate if they had to go further, do a further setback, they would be willing to do that. Have you guys talked to the homeowners and, and asked them what would be, what would be a meeting point for a setback?
Communications have not led to that at this point.
Okay. Have you got a map of the property? Ms. Walker, can you come up and show us your property on the map?
It also may be helpful, and I apologize to you, but we've also partnered with a local landscape architect company to perform some landscape renderings and suggest some native species that they recommend for the vegetative buffer. Arrington Bridge should be right around here.
Can you show us where your property is?
This was a map that we, that we saw that they, we didn't know. And I had to recall what.
Well, let, what Barry can show us.
Mr. Chairman, I think I might can help.
So can you show, show from her?
So can you show, show from her house, can you show me where the proposed site is, how far it is, the setback right now?
So is it just one house, or is it, is it more than one? Well, I guess...
There's a church here, the, the church is here.
Right.
We have property over here, but it's been housing right here.
So, so where is the solar farm in relation to all their property?
So, huh.
Right here. All this right here, all this green right here.
So the ordinance has a hundred-foot minimum dwelling setback made it from the principal building, so i.e. the house. So, I, I, excuse me, apologize. If you can, you probably see, if you have a map of the, in front of you, the, there's like a hatch layer around the home here, around that, around the building, and that indicates a hundred-foot boundary that is, that is not within. The green demarcation here is also a vegetative buffer, which is a twenty-five-foot buffer that is proposed to use existing vegetation that's in place, but it's not at place at the time of construction and being planted.
There is no buffer between my mom's house and this proposed.
Okay.
When you came and cut the trees down, you cut every single one of them down, so there is no buffer between them.
Yeah, so these are, these are, these are from digital files online, they're going, they can be off-base. And for that reason, this one I'm going to kind of highlight for you all, this is a landscape rendering that we work with, with Landscape Designs of Gold's Borough, and this indicates a, as the ordinance, as the ordinance requires, at the time of planting shrubs, wherever green plants, if you plant at a height of four feet, they need to reach a height of ten feet within three growing seasons. The species listed here are all aggressive growers that will plant at a height of four feet, and they grow at a rate of two to three feet per year with a maximum height of ten to twelve feet.
You must be planting illy agnes then, that's the case.
Pardon?
You must be planting illy agnes.
Yeah, they're native species.
Is that one on here?
That is a part of the mix that is intended to be planted. So, in areas where a proposed, well, I apologize, where existing buffer is not available to be utilized, we will be planting something similar to this and utilizing species of this, of these same species or of similar growth rates to screen the project.
So there'll be a buffer regardless whether there's trees there or whether there is a planted buffer?
Yes.
And the planted buffer is how wide?
Twenty-five feet.
The planted buffer is twenty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
On the outside of the fence?
Yes, sir.
So then the fence and then the solar farm is, is further in from that, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the actual panels itself are going to be well over the hundred-and-twenty feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hundred-and-seventy, hundred-and-fifty, hundred-and-seventy.
So this, so, so the actual panels itself are not going to be within that seventy-five or a hundred feet like, like they were talking, they're talking like a hundred-and-seventy-five time you get the buffer. And based on my knowledge of the plants, you won't see, you won't see anything, especially to plant illy agnes there.
So in comparison, the typical solar panel when placed on top of racking in a pile is about ten feet tall. So within being the same height, we expect minimal visual impact for the project based on this rendering.
Personally, I have not seen a panel, I mean, a solar farm with the vegetated border that looks this nice. Most of the ones when you ride down, up and down the road, they, little springs here and there and grass growing everywhere.
I can speak to that. Absolutely right. Some, some solar farms that have been existing were in pus, were in place before we had screening requirements in some ordinances, very well may be in Wayne County prior to you all insulating a, that vegetative screen of, in your ordinance. This project, however, with that being a part of the ordinance right now as it is, it will have a vegetative screening, and we furthermore have, you know, worked with that landscape architect to have insulation and maintenance requirements for the project, for the plants to ensure that they grow how they're supposed to.
Name, name the plants off on the legend at the bottom.
We have the illygnus.
Did a common name.
Sorry. Thorny illygnus, Japanese privet, and southern wax myrtle.
Okay. So all that's aggressive growing, that's going to be, and I would say, I would think they will be installed at somewhere in the neighborhood of prob, what does it say what size they are?
Four feet tall in insulation.
Okay.
Another thing they impressed on us is the timing at which they're going to plant them and the amount of watering and the seasonality that they won't just put them up on our construction timeline, they'll put them up in the ideal growing timeline of those. And when we do clearing for the project, the idea is having that long runway with, you know, in coordination with the logging company and with them is we may even have certain areas cleared out in advance so that we can know the vegetative buffer is up and going and growing properly before we would be moving forward.
Is that one of your main concerns?
That gate being s, and panels being seen?
Because I mean, that would be my concern too, if I had a property over there.
Have, have any of you been out there to that land?
Yes, ma'am.
You been on my mom's land?
Not on the, we've driven Arrington Bridge.
And you been on what you, what you're processing. There is no way that this is going to work because of how you saying, you know how many of these things you done planted? The way you saying it is, is not going to, this thing is in the backyard of my mom's house. If you can walk out of her backyard, the man's not there, you came to cut the trees down, you marked her trees, you marked her trees, and you didn't cut those trees down, you didn't ask her to cut those trees out. But the way it's looked, she can walk step right foot, and the way you talking about putting this is, is right in her backyard.
Um, just to, just to...
Excuse me.
Just to clarify out.
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
We need to get him sworn.
Yeah.
We spoke to your standard procedure right now.
Oh, he, he was not sworn. Excuse us just a moment here while we do some housekeeping.
Yes, because he wasn't, she wasn't, okay. Okay. You can just stand by him. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help me God?
I do.
Yes. Okay. All right, now we're legal again.
Hand me that, hand me that thing for a minute, just step over there.
In front of the commission, there is a pullout in that giant binder under site, site web.
So, the fence, the fence right here, is that a, is that a taped fence or is that just, is that a panel?
No, sir. That is the, the panel.
Okay, okay, got you.
That's what you represent.
I got you, okay.
As I said, at, at the installation, it'll be four feet tall.
Right.
But roughly, when panels are installed, it's, it's all, we had a ten feet, so there is some deal to between there, but that's why we have the...
But you go spaced out, right? It's not just one line of shrubbery either, correct?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Okay, um, let's bring things back into perspective here as we are having discussions. One of the things that I'm most concerned, and that is health, safety, and radiation impact. Have you shared with the Johnson family regards to those issues and the studies that have been done?
Uh, yes, sir. So at the planning board meeting, I apologize, at the community meeting that occurred on May tenth, we did share, share a summarized version of the health and safety report that was completed by Tommy Cleveland. It did not go into...
You said a summary?
Yes, sir. It was mainly the introduction, conclusion, it didn't go into all of the different areas of...
Would you share the complete study with them?
I could absolutely do that.
Please do, please do, because I can understand your concerns, and I think you need to have the full study provided to them.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, sir. I, I agree. I guess in, in our good faith, we just wanted to provide a more digestible version. The, the report is about fourteen pages long, so that can get a little bit lengthy. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I got one more question.
Okay.
At the meeting that Ms. Walker, and how many people attended? Do you have a sign-up sheet or anything, how many people attended that was notified?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We, uh, I think we had a roughly fifteen neighbors show up.
Out of all this list, you just had fifteen people?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's a lot of people here, just had fifteen people show up. A landowner.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Will we be also be able to give the study from Seymour Johnson about the birds?
Yes, would you provide that as well?
Thank you.
To, to the extent that Seymour Johnson allows us to do that, we will be happy to provide.
That's fair.
If it's helpful, I mean, we can provide them a full binder that you all have, which has that plan, has all the plans in it. So, yeah, to address any of their concerns.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Parker, anything further? Here you go. All right, I am going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is hereby closed. Lot of information. And what is the pleasure of the board at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approved the special use permit for Oxbox Solar LLC for a solar facility located in Indian Springs Township.
Can we have a motion on the floor and discussion?
Does that include the three things that the base wanted?
Sir?
Does that include the three things that the base wanted?
Yes, sir. For the special conditions from the Seymour Johnson Air Force.
Okay, you're right, right. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
And just, and I'd like to make sure that the Johnson family receives the information that they've requested.
And they will.
They've got hold of it already, correct?
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And, and, and if you gentlemen could see if there is some wiggle room to, 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 to go further back with, with the lines going to the solar farm.
We will continue discussion.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. I can, I'm just highlighting how I like that the development is very nascent, it's obviously in its development stages, haven't gotten any formal civil or electrical work as far as engineering is concerned, but we'd be happy to accommodate where we can. We want to be, you know, we definitely don't want to impose a star will on anybody, and definitely want to work with them.
We'll be good neighbors because it's going to be neighbors for a while.
Probably, that's true.
If it proceeds.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, being none, all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, uh, looking at our agenda, I believe we have gotten everything taken care of only the, on the agenda. County managers, I'm sorry, public comments. No one signed up for public comments. Okay. County managers report.
Well, working on week three, and it's been very interesting. I appreciate your support in selecting me as your manager. Look forward to working with you, look forward to serving the public. When I was sixteen years old, I, I participated in the internship program, much like what we did today with these kids. It exposed me to local government, I worked for an architect at the time, and it, but it exposed me to local government, which I later on changed my mind about architecture and went into local government and chose that as my major in college. So you never know what it'll lead to. One day you might be a county manager, and you just started out as a planning technician. So that, that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Williams?
Uh, yes, I want to piggyback off of the, the summer internship program. I think it was wonderful. I mean, I'm just so, so happy that I saw all these young people in our community, and we have gems in this community. I want to thank the department heads that gave it, gave them opportunity. You know, sometimes we think our young people, we might think they might be just getting in the way, and I've heard such great things about these kids, and I know they're going to be missed. You know, it seemed like it was, the program was a little bit too short. Hopefully, we can extend it a week next time. And I just want to, you know, again, thank our department heads, thank all of the parents that allowed their kids to do it as well, and thank our post-secondary kids that came back home. And that's what we want. We want our young people to have a reason to come back, because a lot of kids leave, they don't come back. Also, we're going to be having free ice cream on July thirty-first. The Ice Storm is having their Heart of Fun anniversary, our first year anniversary, and we're going to be giving out free ice cream, there's going to be prizes, there's going to be, you have the opportunity to dunk a commissioner. Anybody want to volunteer? We're going to have a dunk tank.
Tool for that.
And I'm going to be, I'm going to be in a dunk tank, so anybody who may like you would...
Now, I may come by there for that.
He could raise, he could raise some money if he was in there.
I'd bet. And a lot of people show up to duck me.
Yes. And we're going to be giving out, like I said, free ice cream, we're going to be having prizes, we're going to be just doing a lot of great things, giving back to the community, a little bit of music, so everyone's welcome. Tell someone about it. It's July thirty-first, it's going to be on a Sunday from twelve to four, we'll have the fire department, goes to a fire department, it's going to have a sprinkler out there. So it's going to, you know, we know the weather's getting hotter, so we'll be having an opportunity to cool up at the same time. So thank you so much, that's all I have to...
Okay. Commissioner Barbara E. Cott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing on the exit, on the students and things, I would love to see if they had a mind change of maybe a different career path after they had been exposed to this.
Good point.
I mean, you know, somewhat like Mr. Crumpler said, you know, he went in for architect and then he changed to local government. It would be interesting to see if they do have a different mindset and the career path that they would like to choose. And, and I do appreciate Commissioner Williams again for the program. It has just really been enlightening to see all of what has happened to these students, and I was very impressed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hardeston?
Again, that's that well-deserved panel by Commissioner Williams here, and also his partner, because this is something that he's talked about for years, even when he was on the city council. And I also like to thank the commissioners for going along with it, supporting it, and providing the funding that, that was needed.
Yeah.
My main concern right now for the county is COVID again. It's been out of the headlines and out of the general conversation, but COVID is on the rise again in Wayne County, actually is on the rise again in the nation. Problem is, is that the symptoms aren't severe, so people walking around with it, don't know they have it, and they're spreading it. I've just got my third bout of COVID, had all my shots, my booster, so just be aware that, continue some social distance, you know, and just be safe. That's it for me.
Mr. Gerling?
Thanks, sir. What we just approved on the solar farm, I want people to kind of think a little, I'll think a minute, about the economic impact that four hundred employees plus is going to have on Wayne County's economy for the, and when they start this project for around eighteen months. It, it's, it's going to be a strong impact, especially for the area to this end, it's actually going to be a big impact in that area. We do want to be good neighbors, and if anything that we can do to accommodate, we, we would, you know, we encourage that. It's, it is a business, so we understand that you've got certain parameters you've got to stay by, but, but we do want to be good neighbors on, on everything that we do. Also, I got a phone call, it'll be a month or so ago, from Larry Thompson at the Pine Forest United Methodist Church, asked me to go speak, and I said, yeah, I don't mind doing it, maybe, it might have been two months ago. And, and, in the timeframe, we promoted Chip to, to county manager. I said, well, you know what, I might just get Chip to go along with me and kind of tag team. Well, I'll be honest with you, old man over there, he's smooth as butter now, he just flowed right on out, he worked the crowd. We had a, I've got a lot of phone calls back from, from the discussions that we kind of went over the, the economic development aspect that we've had put together that we've actually, I did it at the Board of Realtors, he did it at the industrial thing that we had at Eastern, Richardson, Eastern Illumina. And, but that was a, that was a good thing, and I appreciate... And, but that was a, that was a good thing, and I appreciate Chip going, and we've got a lot of positive feedback and a lot of good information. So, he might have some more speaking engagements coming soon, so that's all I got.
Okay. Vice Chairman Acock?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Going back a little further than our last meeting, you know, we had the groundbreaking for the hotel on June 30th. It's been kind of amazing the number of people that has made comments to me about how much this is going to benefit Wayne County. So, that tells me that people are watching us, because I didn't figure that, you know, just another groundbreaking would move forward, but I don't know. A lot of people have made comments on how beneficial that project is going to be to Wayne County for bringing in more revenue. Also, I attended a friends of Seymour meeting last week, very short meeting, but Chip was also there with us. They will be making plans for the Wings Over Wayne next year. That's a project that takes a lot of time to get it all put together, but that project is started. Also, last Saturday, I went to a dear friend's funeral, Mr. Jack Howe from the Oakland community. He was a dear friend, a dear opinionated friend sometimes, but he contributed a lot to the Oakland community on Oakland Fire Department, served many years as chief there, also very active in his church, and he will be missed in the Oakland community. Also, on Saturday, had the honor and privilege to go on to Mr. Woodrow Anderson's 102nd birthday celebration. Mr. Woodrow, his mind's sharper than mine, but he's... It's the history to just sit and talk to him, and what he's been through in 102 years. And he, one of the most interesting things about Mr. Woodrow's life is he's a World War II veteran. He witnessed the surrender of Japan on the Missouri. He was not actually on the Missouri, but the escort destroyer that was moored right next to it, the Topeka. He was stationed on that ship, and, you know, it's just, to sit and talk to him, it gives you goosebumps to see what he has seen in over 100 years on this earth. I told him I'd see him next year at his 103rd birthday party, and he said, plan on being here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. As this board took up today, the resolution in support of the quarticent sales tax. I hope we will get behind that. It's, being a commissioner now a little over 10 years, I find it really hard as a commissioner to constantly have to pay for governmental services by only looking to property owners to increase their taxes to pay for those services. And our services and our costs are going up. We see that the, I'm going to say estimated rate of inflation is 8.1. I have no idea how they figure that, because when I compare my cost of groceries and gas and right on down the line, it's substantially more than that. But at any rate, the cost of operating governments as well goes up dramatically, and we unfortunately have to raise the revenue to pay for those services. One of the better ways, in my opinion, of paying for those services is a fair share, share of those taxes through sales tax. Everyone pays that. So, at any rate, I hope that we can launch our program and that everyone in our community will get behind and support the referendum that will be on the November ballot. That said, is there anything else to come for this board?
Nothing further, sir.
Nothing further. We're going to recess our meeting, we have a lunch meeting with our fine group that was here earlier. We are going to be able to interact with them, ask them questions, and why they became a part of this new program. Hopefully, we can encourage them to possibly apply again next year, if possible, and encourage others and expand that program. After that lunch meeting, we, at 3 o'clock, will be going on a tour of the Johnson County new jail, in that we are looking at building a new jail here, we wanted to get as much insight as possible from that. So, I encourage my fellow board members to participate in that, I think, Ryan, you're getting transportation arranged. So, it'll be a long day, but I think we will benefit greatly by going and touring that jail. If there's nothing further, we're going to...
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention. Tonight, Wayne County Fire Fighters Association has their monthly meeting. It will be at Grantville Fire Department, have a meal at 7:00, and the meeting starts at 7:30. All the commissioners are certainly welcome to go to that, because the volunteer fire departments in Wayne County provides a service that the county cannot afford to pay for, and we need to show our appreciation to what they do. Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Acock, I think it's going to be at the Free Wheel Baptist Church in Grantville.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Your assistant clerk has pointed out that you did not adjourn the Board of Adjustments.
I did not adjourn the Board of Adjustments, well, let me do that right now. We adjourned, I thought I adjourned the public hearing, but Board of Adjustment is now adjourned as well.
I need to make a correction to, sorry, Commissioner Acock, it was Fallen Creek.
Fallen Creek, okay.
That's the white church on the corner, right?
Okay, with that in mind, we're recessing our meeting, and we'll convene at the Jeffries Building for lunch.
At what time?
At what time? What time is our lunch?
11:15.
11:15? Well, we better get on the way then.